You gonna keep me honest, Marty?
We're adding.
I gotta do that first.
I didn't get much time today because my principal went meeting.
First thing we have is an addendum to our closed meeting, which is Section 2.2 dash 3711, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose and the disposition of public health property, or discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or the negotiation strategy of the public body. And that's on the Old Blacksburg Middle School. And then the leaded from closed meeting is the Montgomery Tourism Development Council. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Third.
They're moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
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 All right. And the next item is to go into closed meeting. I'll get the motion moving.
You can, yes.
Do you have a motion to go into closed meeting?
So moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Okay, and the purpose of the closed meeting is Section 2.2-dash-3711, discussion or consideration or interviews for proposed candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or registration of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and also the removal... Oh, and that is for the Community Service Board and the Laboratory Board, and our addendum of removing the Montgomery County Tourism Development Council and adding Old Blacksburg Middle School property. Roll call, please.
We already did that.
We're not closed meeting.
Okay, we're done. All right. I guess we'll do it here the way I like it. I'd like to get back to the agenda, please. And the first item is to go into closed meeting. Do you have a...
So moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye. And the next item is the certification of the closed meeting, where as the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-dash-3711 of the Court of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that through the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The next item on the agenda is our invocation, and at this time I'd like to take a moment in silence if everybody will please stand, and following that, Mr. Meadows will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
All right, before we get into public address, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Tuck to make a statement, please.
Be happy to. I happened to had the opportunity to speak with Craig in regards to one of the issues that came up last...our last meeting. We voted to discuss in the possible naming of the current Blacksburg High School with the school board and see if there was community support to address any name changes that might be present. It's my understanding from speaking with Mr. Meadows that there was not any community support, there's not support from the school board, and so as far as I'm concerned, that issue is resolved at this point in time. But it was, I think, at least a good discussion point to just talk about those type of issues. Never hurts to talk about things, might hurt to do some things, but that was all that vote was, was to discuss with the school board the possibility of names, and so as far as I'm concerned, I'm satisfied from the report back from Mr. Meadows.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tuck. And the next item on the agenda is public address. We have three people signed up for it, and when I call your name, if you'll please step forward and state your name, address, and you'll have five minutes. And the first person on the list is Elizabeth and Grace Mitchell.
Go, Grace. I would like to discuss the renaming of Blacksburg High School, even though you did say that it was resolved, I would still like to state my piece and what I wrote. I...do I have to say my address? Yes, maybe?
Please.
Okay, sorry, a little bit nervous.
That's okay.
2109 Reagan Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. Do I start now? Okay, sorry, my first I'm doing this.
You're great.
My name is Elizabeth Grace Mitchell, and I am a rising freshman at Blacksburg High School. I'm here to discuss your decision to direct the school board to consider renaming Blacksburg High School. I'm the Blacksburg High School class of 2017, the unlucky one. I spent all three middle school years many miles away to school in Christiansburg because, as you remember, that's where we were moved. The locker's often jammed and were pointless, the cafeteria was too small, we had no auditorium, the choir room was cramped and crowded, the eighth grade resided in flimsy trailers...and the eighth grade resided in flimsy chairs. In three years, we never once had a school-wide assembly, and never once during my entire middle school education did I ever get to see a real science experiment conducted in class. As the school year came to an end, my classmates and I are very excited to return to Blacksburg High School in the fall and to the town of Blacksburg in general. But three years before our trips to Christiansburg were to end, you all conceived the idea to punish us again and attempt to change the name of our school. Forget that the signs had already been purchased and that all these school uniforms for sports and cheerleading also Blacksburg High School. There are students in our county who cannot afford lunch or school supplies, and instead of spending money on those students, we'd be spending it on new signs and uniforms. If you truly think that the school board should rename Blacksburg High School Northwestern Montgomery County High, I know, for the sake of consistency, you will direct the school board to consider renaming Christiansburg High School to Middle Montgomery High and Auburn High School to Southern Montgomery High. If, as I think, the issue of this name has nothing to do with the name of the school, then I stand before you tonight so that you can see who you are using as pawns in a game of county politics. We have traveled to Christiansburg for three years to go to school. We had to wait until a new school could be built in Ryanair before a replacement school could be built in Blacksburg. How that my friends and I have been punished enough for living in Blacksburg. My mom and dad made me edit this part, which is probably a good thing. I understand that there is some dispute going on between Blacksburg Town Council and the Board of Supervisors over what to do with the old middle school site, and I understand that when adults cannot work together, children often pay the price. When you begin your official business tonight, I ask that your first order of business will be to immediately move to under the motion that was made two weeks ago. Make it clear to me that me and my classmates were unintended collateral damage in county politics. Otherwise, you'll be teaching us a political lesson that there really are two sides to this county. Is that really what you want to teach us? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well done. All right, and our next speaker is Nick Whitaker. If you'll please come forward and your name and address, and we've got five minutes.
Hello, my name is Nick Whitaker. It's 2160 Big Vane Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. Hello, Mr. Brown. I am a graduating senior this year from Blacksburg High School. I went to the original high school, Blacksburg High School, and she pretty much covered everything that I could have said and more. I believe that the changing the name was, just as she said, it was politics, let's be honest. And it's unfair to drag high school students into county politics. It's rude and disrespectful and very distasteful. And just as she said, she said just about everything we could say on the matter, and none of the students support this. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next speaker is Mark Fought.
Yes, my name is Mark Fought. I live at 1921 Greenbrier Circle, and with your remarks, Mr. Tuck, I will tell you that I will re-edit on the fly the remarks that I was going to make, but I did want to show a little bit of research that I did this afternoon. I believe the name was going to be Western Montgomery High School. That was the name that was mentioned, perhaps Northwestern Montgomery High School. What I did was I took a map of the county and divided it into four equal quadrants, and you'll see by this map, and I have copies of this that I can give to any of you if you're interested to take it, that both Christiansburg High School and Auburn High School are actually located geographically west of Blacksburg High School. And Blacksburg High School actually is just barely on the western side of the line that divides the county into an eastern half and a western half. And then one of the other things that was mentioned about the initial desire for this was the catchword diversity, and wanting to capture the fact that there are students that attend Blacksburg High School that don't live in the town of Blacksburg. So I did some research this afternoon, and again, I've got a map if you want to see it. It is true that the town of Blacksburg is surrounded by a good bit of real estate that feeds into Blacksburg High School in that particular strand, but this map also shows in the dark gray areas, you probably can't see it from here, but there are lots of surrounding areas that aren't in the town of Christiansburg that also feed into Christiansburg High School. And I thought it was particularly unfair to single out Blacksburg for even contemplating this kind of an action and not considering the other schools in the county as well. I have a bit of a personal interest in this as well. When you walk in Blacksburg High School, you'll see two numbers on the wall, jerseys that are retired. One of them is Austin Cloy that died in the Virginia Tech shooting, the other is my son. His jersey is retired at Blacksburg High School. It says Blacksburg across the front of it. Not Western Montgomery, not Northwest Montgomery, Blacksburg. Blake was proud to be a Bruin, and I know if he was here, he would support me in saying, "Leave Blacksburg High School's name intact." Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone want the maps?
I would like...
Go ahead and pass them around.
I'd like to see them.
Will Sheriff let me approach the basketball?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be safe.
Keep them on board, Mr. Fought.
Yeah, you're fine.
Just give them to him.
Thank you very much.
There you go, Sheriff.
Well, Sheriff, is it safe for you to approach the county?
Well, I tell you a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Tuck, for your remarks.
All right, the next item on the agenda is addendums, and we have none.
There may be others that didn't sign up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the board? If so, please come forward, say your name and address, and we've got five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jack Selkowitz. I live down on High Rock Hill Road in Pilot. It's nice to see some of our other citizens besides myself and the reporters show up. You get the takes, say off the cuff remark by Mr. Tuck to get an audience here, which is very nice. And since there's other people besides the regulars here, I would hope that one of you folks would kindly address the progress that has been made on the multi-million dollar animal shelter, what we've done since we've allocated the first section of funds. I would hope somebody will bring it up later on tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff?
Evening. Tom Vivens, 1941 Greenbrier Circle. Obviously, I'm here to comment, and I appreciate you rescinding, but I still think this all needs to be set, because I think there's a bigger item here than just this particular area of concern. Mr. Tuck's idea that you voted on as a group was an extremely untimely item in this county. These kids were going to take exams. They were excited about having a new high school, and you pulled a rug right out from underneath them. So it was kind of an immature act, basically. It was kind of a knee-jerk reaction, and I feel that this board needs to give an apology, not so much to the citizens of Blacksburg, but to the students of Blacksburg High School. And I really feel strongly about that. What you have done, and we have done this in this county for years, I haven't lived here as long as most of you, but the fact was, years ago, you took the Indians away from this group of people. Okay, that was drawing a line in the sand. When we had the school problems, we drew lines in the sand. You keep getting everybody to compete and take sides on each and every issue, and you're not making this a county, you're making an individual represent of your unit so that you can get re-elected. Now, you guys need to get on a team. I gave the same talk, basically, when we were doing the school thing. You guys that haven't been in the military, if you've never played on a sports team, this is what it's supposed to be about. I mean, I don't care if you go to Christiansburg High School, you go to Blacksburg High School, and you fight it out on the field, but you know what? When the game's over, you should pat each other on the back and walk off the field and have a good time. And I'll give you just a little extra what I do. I go to football games, and you have drunken students, they come up, and they just give you, you know, the business about being at a game. And I look at them, I say, "You guys really aren't very smart, are you?" I said, "You should be praising me that I have come to your game to be an opponent." I said, "One, if we don't show up, then you don't have the excuse to get drunk and act stupid like you are, and two, we come to your facility, yeah, we're gonna give money to your community," whether we go to hotel rooms or whatever it is. So we do need competition, but we continually do this in this county. It appalls me that we can't act in one direction continuously. We're continually drawing lines in the sand. And you guys had us throwing dirt at each other between, you know, Blacksburg and Auburn. It was like a choice, and it should never have been that way. I mean, Blacksburg tried to take the high road there and said, "Hey, you know, Auburn High School should be there, that's a thing that goes." Doggone, it was a hard time, you know, to get this whole thing, you know, orchestrated. So, guys, get on board and become a team. Let's be a county, let's be proud of it. I mean, I can imagine, and people aren't gonna pay attention, they're looking outside. If they were looking outside and look at the actions our county did sometimes, it'd be embarrassing at times. And you guys did a great...the school board did a great job of getting the school going and getting the middle school thing going. That wasn't easy, but, you know, we fought through that, and everybody did a pretty doggone good job. But, you know, give these kids a little spirit coming into this next year. And really, I don't know if you can do this, Mr. Tuck, but I would, you know, be a nice, low-profile, say, "Hey, I screwed up, kids, and I apologize. It probably wasn't a good time." I'm not saying I changed the name was a good day or indifferent, but timing sucked. So, you know, let's all be a team, let's get together. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the board? Seeing no one, we'll close this public address. Again, we do not have any addendums.
No, sir.
No.
And the next item is the consent agenda.
No approval.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The next item is new business, and that's a resolution amending the county's watch for children sign policy. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved. They're moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd like to say one thing, Mr. Chair, about this resolution, is that at the last line it says estimated cost for one watch for children sign is $850. And when I go on my search engine and look, I mean, you could buy the signs for $69 or $70, that may not be installed, but if it's $850, I don't think we would have many requests for signs that citizens are gonna pay for in private neighborhoods. It's almost like it's cost prohibitive, or if we do have a rash of them, then it's gonna cost us, the county, quite a bit of money to...whatever.
Any other comments, discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
I'm gonna abstain, because I wasn't here last week...last meeting when this was discussed.
Okay. Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Bluth?
Aye.
Six ayes, one no.
Okay, the next item is Item B, Resolution of Appropriation of the FY 2013-14 Budget.
So moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
No.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Six ayes, one no.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd like to thank the three folks sitting right there on the front, too, and Carol as well. They put a lot of time into this and certainly appreciate you being here tonight to answer any possible questions.
Okay, subject D now.
I'm sorry.
This thing is slipping on me.
That one.
Okay. The next item is Item C, Appropriation of School Operating Fund, One-Time Funding of $575,000. Do you have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
No.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
No.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Five ayes, two no.
Okay, this thing is just touching the...
You're really flying through.
Yeah. Okay, subject E is Health Insurance Reserve. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, the next item is annual brooming and blooming cleanup. Do you have a motion? That's a...do you have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
And, Mr. Chair, I'll just add, this is something the board did in years past after the bl...I can't say it either, brooming and blooming event each season. This year was our 30th anniversary, and the county really put forth a strong effort, and Bill Long, Michael Sutherland, and Teresa Sweeney were all very active in getting this organized, so I appreciate your consideration of this resolution.
Okay. And the next item?
Vote.
Vote. Roll call, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and the next item is County Attorney's Report.
County Administrator's Report.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of things this evening. First, I wanted to remind everyone that the property auction for several of the surplus properties that the county has will be held on July the 12th. I believe that's a Friday at noon, and the auction itself will actually be held in this chambers. The descriptions of the property will be here. They're also gonna be posted on the auctioneer's website. We're using Larry Linkus with Linkus Auctioneers. The largest piece of property in that group that we'll be selling is the former Elliston-Lafayette school site. We've gotten pictures made of several of the properties already. We're gonna have pictures of the Plum Creek site and the Texas Hollow site made in the next couple of days. All those will be posted and available for folks to look at, so I hope we have a good turnout for those sales. We'll also be notifying the adjacent property owners, the auctioneers, notifying the adjacent property owners on those four properties as well, to see what interest there may be there. Two other things I just wanted to mention briefly. We'll be contacting you pretty soon to talk about setting up a road viewer's tour. We actually haven't done one of those in a couple of years, but now that we have a little bit of money in the revenue sharing fund for VDOT for these projects, we'd like to get the group together and go out into the county and look at some of these roads that we've been talking about. I know we haven't done one since Supervisor Gabriel and Supervisor Tuck have been on board. We all pile up in a van and go riding around, which is quite interesting, but we'll probably be looking to do that late July, early August. I know some folks are gonna be traveling this month and early next month, so be expecting an email from Ms. Kaiser on trying to find some times to do that. We also need to try to find a time to do another extended work session to talk about where we are with our mission and vision statement and some of the things that we're using to build a plan for staff. The only other thing I wanted to mention was, you've probably...there was a very good article, and I'm gonna try to get it and send it to you guys, in the Roanoke paper about stormwater. Roanoke County is really starting to be concerned about stormwater, and we are as well. Roanoke County has a lot more commercial property than we do, but this stormwater issue is the next, as I call it, 800-pound gorilla that's gonna be affecting all of us in the months and years ahead. It's gonna be extremely expensive for the county to deal with. We're working with the PD Planning District Commission right now on developing a plan to help us develop a stormwater management plan for the county. We're also having discussions with an engineering firm that would help us begin some implementation steps for that plan, and at some point, it's probably gonna involve discussion of adding personnel, because it is not gonna be...it's not gonna be a simple task. I was out with Supervisor Creed last Thursday in one part of the county and saw firsthand how, when we have a downpour of rain, some of the issues that even in very rural parts of the county, we've got some real issues, and it's gonna be expensive. So, just a heads up that that's coming. We'll certainly keep you advised when we have more information. The PDC's gonna be making a presentation, and our folks are on top of it, but just...I'm sure folks have seen what Roanoke's doing, and we're not far behind them. Mr. Chair, that's all I've got.
All right. Supervisor Creed.
Yeah, I really don't have much of a list, but I feel like I need to address one thing, Yeah, I really don't have, uh, much of a list, but I, I feel like I, I need to address one thing, and that's the name-changing of Blacksburg, and that was a bad timing that it was done. However, I'd like to, and, and for that I do apologize, that it happened that way. Especially if it had to do with, with, uh, your SOLs and this type thing, uh, don't need anything to do that. But, I will say this to further along that, the village of Shawville and Elliston and, uh, Rogers and, uh, all the different little places that, uh, used to be a town, the Fett, uh, there's, there's probably fifteen or twenty, just like there are fifteen or twenty if you go to looking over in the area of Blacksburg. And, we liked Blacksburg, lost our mascot, you know, we were Indians. Through, through no fault of any children's. And, the one thing we did that I thought we did much better than what Blacksburg is doing, or Christiansburg is doing, or any other Seattle school is doing, is that when we started, or we thought, found out we was gonna get a new school, the first thing we did was said, "Hey, we've had Shawville High School for a long time. Let's make it inclusive, and let everybody in to discuss and talk about what they would like for it to be. Does it need to be still Shawville? Does it need to be whatever other name it may be?" And, you know, when you open the door, a wide door, to where people can actually get in and sit down and discuss it, and not have to worry about people losing their temper and getting up and, uh, having, uh, to take over the room, uh, when you do that, and you bring people in and say, "Here, here's what we got, what do y'all think?" Then you suddenly find that working with people is a very good thing. And we have found that Eastern Montgomery is second to none. And that the people in that vicinity came together and decided what they would like for it to be. Not that it had been Shawville for twenty-five, fifty, a hundred years, but that it represented all the people, all the villages in that area, and that it should encompass all the people in that area and, and what they do. And so, that, uh, I'll just leave that at that, and that's all I have.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Perkins.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Tuck, for your statement that you made, I appreciate that. I spent the better part of my adult life in Blacksburg High School, um, so, um, it was quite a, an issue among the people in Blacksburg, but I think we have laid that issue to rest. Uh, I hope we have, anyway. And, um, that doesn't mean that the people are feeling any better about it, but we've laid it to rest. So, thank you very much, and I don't really have, um, anything, um, else to report to you. I've been to quite a few meetings just in the past week, um, and spent a lot of time at the Alliance Meeting and at Peppa's Ferry and some of the other, um, meetings that, that I normally go to. I know that we agree that we would try to inform each other of, um, the, um, happenings of those meetings, and maybe by the next meeting I can gather all that information together and do something about it. But, um, again, I will say that, um, um, I agree that the, the timing was pretty bad as far as the renaming was concerned, but, um, I think, um, that we're all, um, adult enough to put that to rest. Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Brown.
First, I'd like to say that, um, I guess local, state, and federal government is not a perfect science. And, we do, uh, make mistakes. And, and the first thing, I would like to, uh, apologize to the people that I represent in my district, uh, I never knew that so many people in McCoy, Norris Run, Difan Erres was, and Mary Mack, that were so passionate about the name of Blacksburg High School. Even, I've had four children graduate from Blacksburg High School, I've had, I think, seven brothers and sisters graduate from Blacksburg High School, and, and the first thing my youngest son said, "Dad, are y'all crazy?" You know, and, and, uh, but, yeah, I voted for the discussion only on Mr. Uh, uh, Tuck's motion, and it was just for the discussion, not to do anything, not to change any names, anything that would've happened would've had to come back to this board. And another thing, this board did not take away the Indians, I think it was a school board decision. And, uh, but, school board, board supervisors, you know, we all get blamed for the same thing, who's that? I mean, you to count, you to count, you know, and so forth. But, I really, uh, like to recognize the two young people that came forward. It took a lot of courage for that young lady to get up here and to say what she had to say. And, if I was your teacher, you'd get an A.
Right.
And, I see Mr. Whitaker every now and then, just about all the time, and, uh, you'd get an A, too. Just for coming out, participating in local government, whether it's this issue or another issue that may affect you, uh, and, Mr. Bibbins is right, we need to work to strive to be on the same team. Not only the board of supervisors, but the two town councils that's here, too. We need to work together to be, to work to see what we can do, what's best for the entire county. I mean, whether you live in Christiansburg, or you live in Blacksburg, or you live in Shawville, or whatever, we're all county citizens. And when it comes to the schools, we have four school districts in this county, and I always describe the, the school districts as like a heart with four chambers. Christiansburg represents a chamber, Blacksburg represents, represents a chamber, Auburn, and also Eastern Montgomery. When one of those chambers are not functioning appropriately all right, the whole heart is not working the way it should be working, whether the problems in Auburn, Blacksburg, or whatever. But we all need each other for the whole heart to function to its full potential. And, I don't know how many emails, I mean, you couldn't, well, I couldn't, my wife wouldn't go to the grocery store with me, because you could go to the grocery store and you could draw a crowd right quick, two people start talking, next thing you know, you got three people. Next thing you know, the manager said, "What's going on over here?", 'cause it's five or six people. Even, I went up to check on my cattle one day, and I came home, and I must've been thirsty, and there was four people in the driveway waiting for me. Uh, and I had explained to them about the school for about two hours, the awful renaming, so to speak. So, it was a, uh, uh, in one hand, a, a, a good experience to find out how passionate the people are about the name of that Blacksburg High School. And, uh, that is, I think it was only, out of all the emails and calls that I received, there was only one person expressed a little interest. And so I guess it was like a hundred and fifty of one. And, uh, so, I apologize if I caused any undue stress upon the alumni from Blacksburg High School, which I've, you know, people speak their piece. And, uh, and the rising, uh, in our future alumni from Blacksburg High School. You still get, hey, you done a good job.
Mm-hmm.
Done a good job. You did, too, Mr. Whitaker, and Mr. Bibbins, you did, too. All of you did, and thank you for coming. Don't think this is your last meeting, is what I'm saying to you, don't think this is your last meeting. Come out and get involved in what, I think we got, we have, what, about ninety-five thousand people in Montgomery County? Well, you'd think that it would be at least seventy-five, eighty to every meeting. Jack has come so much, he got his own personal seat, he comes to every meeting. And so.
Bill, don't do anything like that, this is again, to, to make people come out.
No, I, I won't do anything like it, you know. But, uh, and thank you, Mr. Tuck, uh, for the statement you made in, in the beginning, and so.
Ms. Biggs.
Okay, I'll sort of go about my report in reverse, I was gonna save the Blacksburg High School thing until last, but I had, thank you, Chris, for what you said, but I, I do wanna say that in the last two weeks, I have never seen the passion that I have seen, for a particular cause, or maybe I should put it in a long time. Grocery store, drugstore, the imaging center of Blacksburg at Montgomery Regional Hospital, the, the, um, the drive-thru at the bank, um, everywhere.
Right.
And even though people would come up to me and say, "Mary, thank you for your vote, but", and I had to hear it all over again, but the thing about it was, I think, I think it really did, it really showed, you know, people are passionate about the name Blacksburg High School, and Blacksburg High School, as I said, I believe that night, has a history and tradition, and my mother's even a graduate of Blacksburg High School. I didn't hear anything from her beyond, but I can imagine what she was thinking if she was here. But, um, I'm glad that we sort of put this issue behind us, but I, I tell you, the timing was really upsetting, and I think in a lot of my emails, I said I was so sorry that this issue had caused so much, um, upset, see, people being upset, like students, former students, citizens. We even heard from people that no longer live in Virginia, um, that were former, um, alumni of Blacksburg High School. And, uh, it, it just, it, it just didn't make for very good feeling, um, towards our board, so I'm glad we're sort of all on the same page now, and, uh, feel better about it. And in regards to that, a positive thing that we could do, that Ms. Perkins and I had discussed ear- earlier, is recognition of the Blacksburg High School soccer team. State champion, so I think we need to get a resolution on that.
Twelve times. Yeah, twelve times, Mary.
So, let's go for it, and the speakers, I wanna thank the speakers, too, and especially the young people. Um, I don't think I would've had enough courage to come up and do that when I was your age, boy, that was really great, thank you for that. So, um, anyway, moving on, um, to, uh, the animal shelter, I believe that the, I'm supposed to be having a, a meeting later on this month with Ms. Edmonds and some other people looking at, we're trying to progress, Jack, we're trying, and you know me, I'm the animal person, so we'll, we'll keep it going, and, uh, then, uh, last but not least, we have a vacancy coming up on our library board trustees. Uh, Mr. Gene Hyde is leaving for a, a job in North Carolina, and so we're losing one of our most valuable members. And he happens to be from District A, um, so there will be an advertisement. Anyone that's interested in applying for a library board should be on the lookout for that. And we can recognize the Blacksburg High School soccer, if we got everybody on board with that.
So moved, yes.
So.
Hey, it's the twelve, twelve straight championships.
Got a motion in a second?
Uh-huh.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Creed.
What, they move up or not?
Recognizing the, uh.
The twelve straight championship of Blacksburg soccer.
Blackburg High School.
Ms. Perkins.
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel.
Aye.
Chair of Lettis.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. Supervisor Tuck.
A few things, when I was in high school, I played chess competitively. Uh, I was very fortunate and, uh, won a few tournaments and ended up going to the Nationals. Young lady, pawns are incredibly important. If you take a pawn all the way down to the other end, it can become a queen. And so, keep on working on those type of issues. And, one of the things, and, and as we've already discussed, the motion wasn't actually to change the name, it was simply to have a discussion with the school board to see what the community reaction was. Clearly, that from Blacksburg wasn't a positive. Now, I'll say I did get a few phone calls from the folks in Christiansburg with some very creative names that they wanted to name the schools, but in seriousness, it is something that's important. Both my mom and dad graduated from Blacksburg High School back when they were called the Indians. My three older siblings all graduated from Blacksburg High School, uh, I brought in one of their powwows a few weeks ago. But, for every one of the speakers, it's, it is clear, the education of our children is very important. And, as far as, why did I do this? I, I, for me, one, I don't believe that talking about things is a terrible thing to do, I think you should talk about issues. And, in addition to that, there were some other things, and there may have been, in regards to some frustrations. Uh, and I, I think that I alluded to that at, at times during, in some of the newspaper articles. And, I believe that there were some board members that changed their mind based on some commitments from Blacksburg, and said, "Look, we are gonna try to move together, we are going to build a new high school in Blacksburg as well as Auburn, and try to work together." There was a commitment from the town, we received a letter, but back before I was on the board, saying that the town of Blacksburg was going to help the county and move quickly to be able, because they understood the critical nature and, and the value of the property that was located in downtown Blacksburg. They said that they would help us, that letter is now over two and a half years old. The entire board, and this board back then, and this board that's sitting before you tonight, all committed themselves to spend this money either to pay down the debt for the new schools, or to use every single nickel on education. This board thinks education is important. I've seen Annette, and Mary, and Matt, all vote in favor of education, Bill, vote in, in, in face of massive tax increases. Tax increases that some of them I've disagreed with, but this board is committed to education. When the first proposals started coming in on that Blacksburg Middle School property, there were some proposals that would've brought in millions more than what the county's accepted. But these board members working with Blacksburg thought about it, and they said, "Listen, they want student housing in downtown, this developer wants student housing in downtown Blacksburg, and that's not something that's acceptable to the town." This board, before I and Matt got on it, compromised and reached out to a, a developer that was looking, still millions of dollars less, but, who was willing to work on two and three-bedroom houses, and to try to match up with what the, the town said they wanted. Um, they met with the town on numerous occasions. And for all of you that've come here tonight, and who have been very upset with me, I ask you, have you gone and talked with the Blacksburg Town Council about the millions of dollars that their decisions may cost our schools? You've talked about we all need to be together, we do. Am I excited for the kids that are gonna be going to the new Blacksburg High School afterward, back when it was being built? It's spectacular, it is a nice facility, I haven't had the opportunity to be able to go out to Auburn, I, I wasn't able to make that tour. I'm excited for those kids, that's a decision that this board has made to commitment to education. So I want to see education supported, but I'm asking each one of you who came up before this board, and that where the, the school name was so important, aren't millions of dollars for our schools just as important? Thank you.
Mr. Gabriel.
I was, sorry, uh, I wasn't here at the last meeting. So I don't really have anything to say about the Blacksburg renaming statement, I personally think it's, um, bad politics and bad policy to, to do this sort of thing, um, it gets us into a really uncomfortable situation. But, that said, the only other thing I will, I will have to add is that I went to the school board meeting last week, and, uh, just to let you know, they've canceled their July meetings as they usually do, um, and that they're gonna have a very small amount of carryover that they'll be asking us to return to them for the coming year. And, that is all I have.
Okay. And I, everything's been said that I could say about the renaming of the school. And, I appreciate Mr. Tuck withdrawing it. And I also did vote for it at the time, and, uh, as everybody else, we saw a great resistance, and we accept that, and we thank you for that input. I don't think in my sixteen years on the board, I have ever received more emails on a single subject. So I really appreciate people speaking up, and you two young people who came up to speak. Congratulations on your fine speeches. And, Ms. Mitchell, you are much more eloquent than I am behind this microphone, so you did a great job. But, uh, that's really all I can say, I'm, I don't really say a whole lot of words most of the time. I'm, I don't really say a whole lot of words most of the time. I did have one other thing that, uh, I attended this last week. For those of you who don't know, I'm on the, uh, Virginia Cares Board, which is a place where we try to get people who come out of prison and play some with jobs and living and et cetera. And, uh, we had our conference in Virginia Beach. And, uh, it was a seven-hour drive over, a seven-hour drive back, and a three-hour meeting, so kind of time-consuming. But, uh, it was a good meeting. We're trying to uh, work with the Governor's Reentry Council also, to put the two programs together, where we can get people trained before they get out of prison to be able to have some sort of occupation to go into without necessarily looking at a minimum wage job, washing dishes. So, uh, these are some of the things we work on, and I've been working on for several years, so.
One quick thing, Jim.
Yeah.
Uh, I just thought I'd bring to your attention, the board members' attention, that, uh, just they got the Western Regional Jail report, monthly report. And you look at Roanoke County, they have one-hundred-and-seventy-four prisons in the Western Regional Jail. Again, Montgomery County has two-hundred-and-twenty-two, where Franklin County has a hundred-and-forty-nine. I don't know what the judges are doing in Montgomery County, but they, they're keeping the jail full down there, uh, in the Western Regional Jail. I thought I'd just pass that on, because, uh, sometimes when we look and we have to allocate funds, to keep the prisons are in the Western Regional Jail, to let you know that Montgomery is doing a good job keeping them off the street.
And I'm trying to find them a place to go when they get out. So we don't necessarily want to put them back in there if we don't have to. But, uh, other than that, that's my report for the evening, and I thank everybody for coming this evening, and all the great I guess scolding we got tonight. But we're tough, we can take it. Uh, if there's no other discussion, I move adjourned.
We're right.